Jameson City Council Work Session for Monday, June seventeenth. For the clerks, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Here.
Braxton. Peter. Reynolds.
Reynolds.
Faulkner.
Here.
Montague.
Here.
Deversa.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
And President.
Here, thank you. At this time, we'll give people from the community a chance to speak to the council. If you have any questions or comments, please state your name and address and limit your remarks to five minutes. Would you like to address the council?
All right, I think that's me. So I'm Paul Leon. I live at one thirty-four Lakeview Avenue. I've lived there for going on forty years. So I know the street very well. And I'm here with a number of homeowners who live on Lakeview Avenue.
You guys?
I think there are seven of us here who live on Lakeview Avenue. And we're here to address two concerns. The noise level and the cry. So I'm going to speak to the noise level and Johnny O'Hagan will speak to the cry. Over the years, we have repeatedly, some of us have repeatedly complained to the city council. And I know, Tony, that you have heard a lot of the complaints about the noise level. And it really is a quality of life concern. Because I think you all know, I mean, it's a straightaway. Lakeview Avenue is a straight, flat street, which is just perfect for drag racing. There's not so much drag racing as motorcycles and loud cars and radio noise. All at upper decibel levels. So we've come here to bring that matter to your attention once more. And to try and to suggest something that might be done to lessen that noise level. And that suggestion would be to enforce the noise ordinances in the city. Now, my thought is the easiest thing to go about this in lieu of putting speed bumps on the street, which would be the best solution, but in lieu of that, to at least put up signage saying that noise enforcement, noise levels are enforced. The noise ordinance is enforced. And to see visibly stops being made for violations of the noise ordinance. Now, in all the time I've lived on Lakeview Avenue, I have never once seen somebody stuck for excessive noise. So that's my concern and the concern of my neighbors here. Not all of whom are, you know, concerned about this matter. But enough of us are concerned to come down here and speak to you and to let you know that it's an important matter for us. And we're hoping that in one way or another, that matter will be addressed. So, any questions?
I know you were at the safety meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you address anything?
No, no. I agree with you. Some of the, well, the issues are important. The noise is unacceptable.
Yeah, it will come at all hours of the day and night, too. And in my perception, there are certain periods of the week where it's worse. And it's particularly bad in the dead of the night. And that may be, may or may not be a motorcycle, but oftentimes it is loud noise coming from the radios. Now, I know that I have gone through to look at the city code in the matter of noise levels. And the code is very specific, very detailed about what is or is not allowed. Decibel levels, you know, revving. Matter of fact, I actually took down, so I should bring it out here. I took down something direct from the code that I'll read to you. There's a whole, long session, section of the code on noise. And that would be section one ninety-eight dash two, if any of you would like to look at that yourselves. And the only thing I've taken down, even though there's plenty of issues that are addressed in the code, but the one that I think particularly pertains to motor vehicles is the one that, I'll just read off to you here. "No person shall operate a vehicle in such manner as to cause unreasonable noise by spinning or squealing the tires of such vehicle or by causing the engine to rev, producing excessive motor roar." Now, the revving is really heavy with the motorcycles. And we will see, we who live there spent a lot of time on our porches. We can see the aggressors here, the same aggressors coming down the street. And it appears as if they're actually intending to provoke. I don't know that they are, but they rev the engines and they sputter. And the motors have to be somehow changed, somehow dealt with in order to make those backup noises. So it's really a matter that we would like to see at least addressed somehow. And I'm saying that signage would be a way to start. Signage and stops and ticketing.
I don't think signage, I don't think speed bumps are going to do anything. Because most of the issues that you mentioned, and someone else mentioned the types of cars that are doing it. Some of those people have been ticketed twice. So if arresting somebody or charging them twice isn't going to do it, I would say that a sign or a speed bump isn't going to do it.
In the public safety committee prior to this council meeting, Jeff suggested, or Jeff brought up the idea, okay, if there are three violations by the same person, then that car or vehicle is towed away. And there's some, there is some real enforcement of the matter. Because we don't see any enforcement. And that's what we want to see, is some enforcement. Because without enforcement, it's not going to change.
Well, we're enforcing it. I think there might be a mix-up between enforcement and punishment. Because I think Councilman Russell has the actual statistics. We're enforcing it. Whether or not people are being held accountable, I don't know. That's up to the court.
Yeah.
But I do.
I'll show some of it.
I do agree that a third offense, you know, making a harsher punishment.
Yeah.
I fully support that.
Well, like I say, you know, we see the same, like, there's a few motorcycles that we see all the time over. And they, you know, they're just making noise for the sake of making noise.
I would like to see them habitual offenders, and I'd like to see their vehicles towed. But obviously, we would have to amend one ninety-eight, two A. We would have to amend that and have language put in there. There would have to be a change of law. It'd have to go through Corporation Council.
Yeah.
Because I agree with Chief, the signage, you know, that that looks great. But people don't understand things until it comes out of their pocketbook.
Well, that's absolutely true. But that gives you some legal maneuvering to enforce.
Sure, exactly. And I will, real quick, I will, we do have a nuisance officer, police officer in the city. Zach Sandberg is his name. I'm just going to rattle off some quick stats. These are from May twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-three to June tenth of twenty twenty-four. There's a whole host of things here, violations. Loud musics, loud music from a residence. There's been thirty-one tickets written. Loud music from vehicles. There's been forty-three tickets written. Three offenders have now been charged twice. There's been sixty-eight tickets written for loud exhaust. There's been eighteen tickets for aggravated unlicensed operation third and aggravated unlicensed operation second. There's been eight, there's been fireworks, seven tickets. Many bikes in the roadway, I see one. I mean, there's a whole, I can print these out, show them to you.
I'm happy to see that, but, you know, I've never seen it myself, like I say, in all the years I've been on Lakeview. And, you know, it's not only on Lakeview, it's on Faulkner as well.
Sure.
Because Faulkner is a straight street as well. So oftentimes, when the motorcycles come around and head on down Faulkner Street, they do the same thing.
Mr. Leon, I live one house from Third Street, and it's the same thing.
Yeah.
Because they got that stretch from Alec and everything, the hit green, all the way across the bridge. And I, I really ride motorcycles sometimes.
I understand.
And I would love to see us take the gift.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if there's some heavy enforcement, there may be a change.
Mr. Remondo, am I correct in saying that we would have to amend the city ordinance? And could we put language in there that says after somebody's citation, whatever we choose to, then the police would have the ability to tow that vehicle? Is that possible?
Yes, yes, that is.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess that's my, that's my pitch. That's my pitch.
Main street, second street. I mean, it's crazy, you know? It's frustrating, always. Anyone else from Lakeview, rest in council?
I would. I'm Kate, and I live on thirty-five Lakeview Avenue, Jamestown. I moved here last summer, bought a new house here. The house is uncommercial, so I can't turn again to the bed and breakfast I anticipated. I plan on bringing a lot of money into Jamestown, but you guys got to get the noise under control. With the vehicles, the only thing that I wanted to add to what he was saying about the vehicles, I've actually gone down at seven o'clock in the morning, whenever my house, that's sixty-nine hundred square feet, and was built in eighteen sixty-five, actually shudders like this from the noise. I've gone down to the guy's car, knocked on the window, very boldly, because I'm from Phoenix, and I don't play that game. And knocked on the window and said, excuse me, hon, I know you can't hear me. Can you roll that window down? Only to have him say, well, I just got this, I didn't steal it, I just bought it. And I'm doing this competition in Erie, Pennsylvania, and I want to try out my music. I'm like, good, go far out of town. Park somewhere else. Do not park in a residential area. We don't like your music. And last year, I moved here in June of last year, I handed out a hundred and fifty earbuds, wireless Bluetooth earbuds, to the students as they walked by with the boom boxes. Let me tell you, I'm a popular person. And the one thing that that did, they stopped playing their music at Eighth Street and waited till they were past my house to turn it back on. I don't know that that matters. I don't know that it makes a difference. But we've got to get really creative with these young people because they're not respectful. They don't care. And it's not just the students under the age of eighteen. These are people under the age of forty that couldn't care less. Most of them don't even live on Lakeview. We are a tourist area. Lakeview Avenue goes straight down to the most beautiful cemetery I've seen, and I'm from Manhattan. So I want to say that. And I absolutely love the street I live on. I love this town. I want to see changes made that are positive, so that Jamestown can grow, not just inside, but financially and be happy and come back from COVID like we should. But it's not going to happen if everybody just turns a blind eye. Let's get creative. And if it takes each one of us knocking on a door, many of the rest could be shot, as a police officer pointed out. You can't just do that. Well, I've always done things like that since I was five years old, feeding the homeless underneath the bridge. But my point is, let's do this. Because signage isn't there. They don't care. Yeah, they're going to spray peanut. Yeah, they're not going to do it. They're still going to blow their, you know, they're still going to do it. And if we don't have signage, it might not mean much, but the signage is going to be everything. And if everybody on the street, and I'm also getting together with all my neighbors for, you know, the walks and the safety, you know, safety codes and stuff like that, and our neighborhood to keep people from biking in, crime enforcement. I've got a master's degree in emergency management. So I plan on doing a lot here. Please help. That's all we're asking. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
I just have a question. I guess Elliot, if this was changed, where they can possess the vehicle after the third infringement, is it legal to put that on a sign, not just put the noise thing, but say after three violations? Like they do for texting?
You could, you could. You could put that on a sign. I doubt that they would read it. So I live in the area, and I know, you know, you've got a national straightaway with undergas. You live around Lakeview, Faulkner, you're never in Newton there. You're never going to stop.
You know, if one person sees it and stops, that's a plus.
Yeah, and I will add, we prosecuted a lot of these tickets, but it's just, you know, you know, you get a monetary judgment, but if they don't pay it, what's going to happen then? So I think the towing makes the best sense.
Absolutely.
If they want their car back, then they're going to have to pay hundreds of dollars to the tow company to get their car back. That's, that's a, that's a pretty good.
You got to have it in the pocketbook, like you said. You don't have it in the pocketbook, they don't care.
Yeah. Although, in a way, they actually have to pay. Because right now, they're getting a judgment, but.
Right, yeah.
I mean, one thing I can say, because I had a situation with my neighbors, and it was ridiculously loud. And when the nuisance officer pulled up, he told me he couldn't believe it. He said, that was just ridiculous. He did sign them, and I will tell you now, I don't have any issues with this loud music anymore. So, I mean, sometimes I think the penalty may, may make people wake up a little bit there, so.
Virginia, was that a house or was it a purse?
That was a house, yeah. I know, but I'm just talking about first, allowing, allowing this. And just the fact that giving some type of citation did stop the situation.
Mr. O'Hagan?
Yes, thank you, Tony. My name's John O'Hagan. I live at four one six Lakeview Avenue. I was born in Jamestown. I've lived here all my life. And I have some issues to talk to you about. Tony, I've already raised with them, but, I mean, go on for a couple of minutes and let you know what's been going on around four sixteen Lakeview Avenue. You haven't heard noise complaints until you see the SWAT team piling out of their vans, guns ready to go, banging indoors to arrest people that are drug dealers. Guns were confiscated, drugs were confiscated. This is right next to my house. This is on Price Street, it's right next to my house. There's, so there's that problem. This has happened twice. The same landlord. I'm getting, there's a, there's a confluence here of what's going on. It's the same landlord. I happen to know who he is, and I know that he owns several properties. I know the properties that he owns. Inevitably, there are broken windows. There's trouble where they are. There's trouble next to my house. I'm blaming a lot of this on a lack of, a lack of dealing with these landlords. The housing in Jamestown, I can't believe how it's deteriorated in the time I've lived here, which has been seventy-seven years, by the way. I have, I have people dropping in all the time next door, stay for a couple of minutes, they leave. Yesterday, I was out watering my lawn. Someone came walking up, walking up the street as soon as they saw me. They put their shirt up so they didn't, so I couldn't, you know, identify them. Right to the drug house, back out, and they're gone. Bicycles come rolling up, same thing. Guys with backpacks, same thing. And yet, drug dealers spent two days in jail, and they're all back there again. So that's a big problem. My neighbor, there's, I have dog problems, too. Same house. Couple of bulldogs. They never take the dogs out. They do their business on my lawn. I walk up Price Street. You can't, you can't get up the street because there's dog doo all over the place. So that's what kind, that's what's going on. My neighbor across the street had to go to the emergency room because one of the dogs bit him. How do we address these kind of things? My problem is the landlords that own these properties take no responsibility for what's going on. They collect their money every month. They let their house, their houses, they own the house. They let them deteriorate. Guy next door to me has broken windows, they tape them over. There's windows that are boarded up on Lakeview Avenue because the landlord won't fix them after they're broken. There's two houses next, right next to me, in a vacant lot. And Tony knows this. Your houses are ready to fall in.
Two next to us, right.
Yeah, yeah. So I would like to see the city council put some teeth into some kind of law that will hold these landlords accountable for what's going on in their houses. I don't know if you can do that.
Do you want to touch on that crystal?
I touched on it briefly during public safety, but I want to. The rental inspection ordinance?
Yes.
Yep. So we have been working on a rental inspection ordinance. And I actually am planning to bring it to the next work session. I mentioned it during Housing Committee. We are hoping that we receive any additional comments and questions prior to, but we would like to get that passed in the next month or so. The state actually is going to be imposing or mandating a rental inspection ordinance, but it's based on lead. So our inspection ordinance will have a bit more, it'll be more holistic than that, so. And that will require rental inspections annually. And it is available for, if you'd like to see it, or, you know, anybody would like to comment on it, we can make sure that you get a copy of it. But that is something that we have been working on for a while now, and we are hoping to have it before the council for about here in the near future.
Well, I would like to see something that has some teeth in it. And a lot of these properties don't need an annual inspection. They need an inspection every, every three months.
Well, I don't know how these are going to end, I think if you don't have staffing for it.
I know you don't have staffing for it.
But rental inspection ordinance is certainly a start. You know, I'll just mention a lot of the landlords, I'm sure. And I would love to talk with you outside of this room after this meeting.
I'd be glad to.
And, you know, you know the landlords, we know the landlords. We have a list. A lot of them are LLCs and are, can be difficult to hold accountable. They do. So, you know, when, when the LLC uses their shield as a sword, I have a problem with that. And I think we all should. So we have been considering what kind of legislation might we be able to propose to the state? Because we, we need help. And we're not the only community, and we're not the only state, as a matter of fact. So this is a nationwide problem.
Yeah, I realize all of that.
Yep.
And, you know, like I said, I've looked throughout my life and just take a ride down Allen Street.
Absolutely. It's, we go from one property to another property all day long, every day. Yeah, it's very frustrating.
You know, we've got to get a handle on it somehow. And I know it's not going to happen overnight, but the longer these landlords perpetrate this, just grab the money and the hell with the house.
It's a prank tour.
Yes.
They're baiting on every single one of us.
It's got to change. And especially, you know, if you've got, if you've got a house that's been hit with the, the squad there, you go with it.
SWAT.
SWAT, SWAT.
SWAT team.
SWAT team, yeah. I mean, why can't you just close that place down?
So we did recently pass a nuisance ordinance that actually has a bit more teeth. So we have made it possible for us, unfortunately, we can only go back to the date that it was passed, and I believe that was in March. But after three incidences, we are able to declare that a nuisance and post that property not to be occupied, or that specific unit. So it may not be the entire property, but that specific unit. So we will be able to start doing that. We've been working on kind of building our arsenal of tools because we need to throw all the spaghetti at the wall because the problems are complicated. And there's a lot of them. So that is another tool that we have developed and passed recently.
Can you, thank you for your efforts.
Absolutely.
Be glad to talk to you afterwards.
Great.
Can you give me copies of everything that we recently passed? And I would like to drop that off at their homes to Lakeview.
Who do you want?
Well, everyone here is from Lakeview, so.
You want just ten copies?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can go first.
I'm Neil Burke. I live along Lakeview Avenue. And I spoke before the meeting, but I'll bring it up again, the noise on Lakeview Avenue. It's a quality of life issue. It's the cars, they've got subwoofers in the trunk, they rattle our windows, the, it's like, I'll be specific about the cars. They're lowered customized Toyotas, Hondas with decals on them. They look like they came straight from elite creations up and down our street, like a parade, right in our face. We're here. Our Lakeview is a beautiful street, it's a historic street, and it's our quality of life going right down the drain. We paid big bucks to live on Lakeview Avenue. And it's just a bad image for Jamestown. I mean, let's face it. Jamestown has a ghetto image, and we got to overcome this ghetto image. Now, we've got people walking by with backpacks with subwoofers, all hours of the night, playing some music. And I'm just here about the noise. I can't, I sit on my front steps on Lakeview Avenue, I can't take it anymore. I go to my back deck, and I hear it on Fulton Street. Now, as long as the landlord issues have been brought up, I am a landlord. I've got a number of properties in town, and I do take good care of my properties. I really do try, and I care about my property. But I have tenants tearing things apart faster than I can fix them. During their year, I got to paint the whole place, tear off the rugs, haul out a dump truck full of junk. It costs a thousand dollars to evict a tenant nowadays, and it takes months to do it. Landlords have almost no rights anymore. And I know not all landlords are good landlords, but we're not all bad either. And we shouldn't all be bashed about it either. I mean, think of all the taxes we pay. Landlords have just said, we pay a tremendous amount of taxes. And getting back to, and we can combine the two. The idea of seizing someone's car if they have three noise ordinance violations, towing it away, I think that's a great idea. Because people just don't care. So let them get their car, put it on a tow truck, and let them walk home to their Section Eight apartment. And that's it for me.
I just wanted to add to what he was saying about the dogs. We also have a dog problem, not just where he is, but we have a dog problem on our end. Where we have lots of people walking their dogs. They do not have leashes on their dogs. They don't even have collars on their dogs. I have two rottweilers that walk by my house every morning at seven AM that are big enough to jump over my fence and attack my lab. My lab's trained. My lab's never without a leash, ever. And she's always got her collar on. She's also microchipped. But so many people anymore don't even do that. They don't care. They lose their animal, they just go down to the pound and get another one. I don't know what the answer is to that, except for leash law enforcement. And I know that's just another thing that the police department have to add to their list. And I know that you guys really have a long list. But if you can, and you see it, please feel free to write the ticket. In Phoenix, it's a five hundred dollar ticket the first offense. It's fifteen hundred the second offense. And the third time, it's twenty-five hundred, and you're banned from ever having an animal again. I don't know if it's possible to do that in Jamestown, but I'd be going to back there. Thank you. Thank you.
Just make sure with that too, we do have a, the animal control officer, if it's a repeat offender, and you see them at the same time, whatever, if you call. They, they will come up and.
I've called, no one ever shows up.
That's, that's not acceptable. Anybody else?
I'm Ross Swaghammer, 127 Lakeview. We talked about this earlier, about Fulton Street behind me there, all the abandoned houses. On several occasions, I've witnessed people throwing garbage and trash out those windows. Most recently, someone's last house burnt with this wrecked behind my house. And, you know, I've called code ops, I've called down to the city desk several, probably half a dozen times in the last week or two. You know, and I don't know what else to do, you know, and like I was telling them. I, I gotta put a new fender on the back of my house, because I'm finding hypodermic needles coming up from that there. And the neighbor next door, I found the same thing. You know, between two of the houses, I was telling them, there's gotta be trash four feet deep, and between two of those houses, everybody. You know, and I won't be drawing rats and everything else in there, so.
Those are abandoned, right?
Yes, there's six in a row, I, I talked to code, and they said, they're on the list, I know it's big bucks to get a tore down now, but. I'm just afraid somebody's gonna get in there again and start a fire, and we have a whole bop going on. You know, because we're all so close together, especially it's hot and dry like.
You're talking about Fulton, right?
Oh, yeah.
Do you have a schedule on those?
Um, I didn't get an updated one, but they are, they are a priority, and, and Fulton Street itself is.
Well, I tell them, a guy came walking by the other day, and he had a brand new copper pipe, he took out somewhere, you know, stainless steel sink. I know he's not the junkyard owner he gets money for, but pulling out of something.
Unfortunately, with a lot of abandoned houses, you get the squatters that go in there.
Right.
People, people go in there, and they're taking advantage of an empty house, and then they do.
I know last year, one house was kind of, be like south on the, a hole from my ends. I thought somebody bought it, because they were getting it all cleaned up, I guess it was code, they cleaned it up, I didn't know. You know, I said, hey, somebody's gonna fix one of these, you know.
Which is also, right, when we clean it up, and we have to intervene. Every time we have to do that, that's taxpayer money.
I know, I know.
So we try not to do that unless we are pushed to the point where.
Well, three houses up from that, I mean, I'm not lying, there's trash four feet deep in between.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Between them there, so.
Yeah, those, those will all get, there's quite a few that are actually going to be torn down. And so when that happens, all of that will get cleaned up, it'll get leveled, and new grass will be planted. They'll be empty, but you know, we're looking at that as. You know, something potential for the future that we could, can replace it with new housing.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
I would like everybody to be aware that. What else they're starting to do is a person on Sixth and Pine. They're stealing air conditioners now, in the middle of the night. He lost, he had two, they took the one, and I don't know, something might have spooked him, the second one they started to take out. And didn't get that far enough, whether something stopped him or what, but they're even doing that now. So be aware.
I know I had a number of things stolen out of my yard, and I put in security cameras, and it seemed, I seemed to help, I think. I had anything stolen, so I put the security cameras in. You know, they have night vision, and they can spot the scene when they come up, you know.
Anyone else? Thank you. Your comments and concerns obviously are heard, and, you know, we're all. Often we get frustrated because we go the same vein everywhere, and it's just, it's a kind of. You know, deal of this street, next street, next street, and there are things that we are looking at doing. New ordinances, stricter ordinances, and maybe some new, some new ideas that could, to help alleviate some of that, but. It's, this is the time of year, especially because of the weather, and it's nice, and it seems to be getting worse. The last few years, the motorcycles, the loud music, it just. It, it seems to have gotten more and more and more.
I just, I just.
We just put in the nuisance ordinance a couple of years, a nuisance officer a couple of years ago, and, and it's Councilman Russell. You know, gave the number of the statistics, he's been pretty good at being able to stop. The difficult part in the enforcement is always that, especially with the vehicles and the moving vehicles, it's like. Catching them at that moment, and seeing like, if it's in a house, or it's constant, it's a lot easier to go there. Unless the police are on that street and doing that, it's, it's a moving target, and it's very frustrating to get, to get them, and they do make stops, and they have made tickets, but. It's, it's difficult, it's, whether it's the fireworks, the fireworks go off, and then by the time an officer arrives, they're done. Or the motorcycle goes by at 50 miles an hour, rubbing his engine, and then he's gone, and so it's, it's very difficult, but we, we. Though we can, uh, address it.
We're always saying a half facetious way, that we would be willing, and we would encourage police presence in a sort of hidden manner. To, and Rod and Rick said they could, you could use their kind of big rod, where you stick somebody in there, and you're gonna make some stops.
One thing I thought of, you still have that speed, uh, interlator radar?
Yeah.
If they could put it down between eighth and, from Fulton to Sixth Street, somewhere in there. You know, I met up there at night where I've seen cars come up from eighth and turn, and they don't even stop at that south side of Fulton, it's blasted.
They move the trailer around based on, yeah, if they can, we can probably.
Get it up there, chief? Don't know.
Even if it's a May Queen.
Thank you for.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Alright, we want to thank you all for listening to us, and, you know. So seriously, so we'll be gone, you can finish your meeting.
Thank you.
President of Lakeview, myself.
You just wanted to stay here today.
I feel you, right? I witnessed it all.
Here's a light you got, right?
Thank you much, everybody, appreciate it.
Stay cool.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Jonathan, I always part of hearing from you.
What is, what is your address again, sorry?
Thirty-five Lakeview Avenue.
Thirty-five, is that on the right going up?
I'm on the right, right before the English Tudor on Eighth Street. On Lakeview and the Eighth.
Okay.
The Whitmore.
Yes, the old Whitmore House.
The white one.
Yeah, the, the spray foam, the spray foam king. Yes, I found that all out, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, I appreciate it, and anything that you can do to help us, please do. Because I, I brag a lot about this town. I can't tell you how many of my friends in Phoenix have all said, oh, we can't wait to get here, can't wait to come see you. I don't want them to come see the noise. You know? I want them to be proud of coming back to see Lucy, and all of that, and the famous. You know, the, the famous spots we have here, along with our history in Jamestown, it means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, move on to our regular agenda, housing.
Thank you, Mr. President, we did have some people stopping, voice of concern, one was. To dealing with the basketball hoops in the road right of way or on the tree lawn. And trying to see what city code by applicable. There's probably a right of way statute that doesn't allow them to be there. And we're gonna have some markets look into that, and we also advise them, the nuisance officer, for the. Noise that these kids create of all hours, there's a street light, and they play it on midnight, so we, we're gonna try to get the. Nuisance officer involved in that one. A second party came and spoke about. Encouraging the city to put together its yearly auction list. And Crystal did a fine job explaining the process, and that all the departments have to sign off, and. That juror and the city might have a separate auction outside of the county auction. So that was informative as well. We had an update that a code officer positions had several candidates, there's interviews being done. And they're doing ride-alongs, ride-alongs for, to see if, we can pique their interest, and see if they're still willing to stay on. Strategic plans in the works within the department development. And they're addressing some of the, I don't know, some of the areas that might be changed. And make it more expeditious and smoother transactions. The annual action plan's gonna be coming up the end of the month. And then we'll start, Crystal and her team will start interplaying the park into, out of five-year consolidated plan update. Nineteen A homes, we've gotten, hopefully real soon, the first bid coming in any day. And that bid proposal, the scope of work will be reviewed to see if in fact, that that comes to fruition. The healthy home protection program, along with the county, is coming online, and. Crystal's department's hoping that we could service and get. Eighty properties involved for, for some healthy home updates. And we mentioned briefly the rental inspection ordinance. Crystal and her team had met with the real estate investment association, and hopefully more information will be coming in by next month. To fine tune that rental inspection ordinance. It was also noted that our ordinance will probably be a lot more restrictive than the state's. A government, a gov pilot, the computer program for all of the city, will hopefully be kicking in gear July 1st. And there'll be a lot of training to go with that, as well as. In the house with the council, we can all have some hands-on in navigating that new program. And then we had a, a comment about the trees in the city. Blocking sidewalks, blocking signs, and. We said that we refer that to either the Parks Department or TBW to clear up some of that. Anything more, Crystal?
She's still up.
No, that.
Those are the pretty big things, especially the strategic planning and gov pilot.
Yeah, so we've covered it. We had a good, fruitful meeting.
Thank you. Want to finance that?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me, we have two resolutions, the first one is. Suspend the hiring freeze, and hire four full-time firefighters to fill current vacancies in the Jamestown Fire Department. Two of those were due to find retirements, and two are resignations. Funding is included in the 2024 general fund, that is approved.
Chief, just a question on that. How many, that doesn't obviously include the ARCO ones, but it turned out that.
Team.
The safer.
The safer grant. So how many, we still would be, need four more, or something?
So for clarification, right now we have sixty-two active members. Of those sixty-two, fifty-eight are assigned to suppression. We have successfully recruited six of the safer, we're still in need of two more. And this would be four that are included in the 2024.
That's separate, that's a different. Okay.
So with that fifty-eight plus those additional six, we are currently under canvas, so if this body choose is to approve that. We'll be looking to try to onboard the four that are included in the resolution in front of you, plus the additional two. To fulfill the rest of the safer, to bring us up to full staff.
That question came up, you want a clarification on the numbers and what they're not?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He also added in that that sixty-eight would make it so every single firehouse was open. And that would stop the rotation of, or the closing of. Firehouses.
Good, thank you.
Our second resolution was the mayor and Mark Rafferty, he, he, after he directed Public Works. Is authorized, directed to hire Simmers Crane Design and Services, by Real Estate Center in New York. To design, build, and install, and then they're hung five-ton crane at a complete unit's home. The total amount helps exceed ninety-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and cents. From the Corporation Council's form. For Simmers was the lowest of three bidders. This funding will be covered under the anticipation note that we passed earlier. That is approved.
And also note that it actually came in less than what you expected by.
What are they presently using?
They don't have.
Not.
No, there's nothing in that.
So nothing to repurpose then?
Front end loader, unload the loader.
We, we estimated that, that crane would cost a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So significant.
There might be some more costs with the install, but it won't be, it, it should be anywhere near seventy-five thousand.
How often does the crane have to be re-inspected, certified?
That's a good question to ask.
And that's basically used to pull motors, do you ever have to pull?
Yeah, so, so take deliveries, they control motors, it can be used to install dump boxes and cobbleries, the ways that you're. You can make some of the things that the mechanics do now a lot safer as well.
Play for an easier, I would imagine.
And then finally, we had an update from the comptroller, just talked about. A lot of the numbers on our interest payments, revenues, spending, overtime. Just to give us a brief update. And that's all we got.
Thank you. Move on to.
Thank you, Mr. President, we just had the one resolution also for the hiring, putting the hiring freeze in the hiring of the four. Full-time firefighters. That funding is included in the 2024 general fund budget. Also, the chief advised me that the ambulance will be in next week, correct?
It's coming Thursday, we expect.
Every next week.
What's that?
Every next week, sorry.
The following week.
We expected this coming Thursday.
Just say it, I was definitely asking, it's next week.
So, once it does get here, how long does it take to, to get that online, and actually in use?
As far as the equipment, it shouldn't be too long, I think it's just been a couple weeks. Although we won't have that vehicle inspected by the New York State Department of Health, they have a certified. I expect that will happen all day, about every day.
And do the men and women at the fire department, do they have to undergo any, any additional training when a new ambulance comes in?
The shortage there's, you know, it will require some changes to our dispatch protocols, so the dispatchers understand how that vehicle will be deployed.
Okay. So there was that, and then we had a number of special events. The first one was for Dios Cone Nostros Church event. On Friday, July 12th. July 13th. And at Jackson Taylor Park from 12:00 PM, I think it's, yeah, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Jackson Taylor Park, that passed. The second special event was St. James Italian Festival, to be held on Saturday, July 20th. From 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM. With some closing of the corner of Allen and Institute Streets, that passed as well. Third special event was World Series of Wheels, to be held on Saturday, July 27th. From 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM at Bergman Park, that passed as well. The fourth special event was Lucy Ball Comedy Festival. To be held from Thursday, August 1st through August 4th, 12:00 PM until 11:30 PM, including setup and teardown. Locations, Third Street, Spring to Pine Streets, and Second Street, and Third to Lafayette Streets, and the East Lane of Jefferson Street, and that passed as well. The next special event was Downtown Jamestown Cruisin', to be held on Friday, August 9th. From 3:00 PM until 10:00 PM, located at North Main Street, Cherry Street, and Pine Street. They also added in there that if Chief Jackson has men or women down there in uniform. That they enforce the no burnouts when the vehicles are leaving, and if that takes place, then I'm requesting that those vehicles that engage in that behavior. Be ticketed for that. So that event was passed. The next event was a citywide kickball tournament, be held on Saturday, August 17th. With a rain date of August 18th, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, located at Bergman Park, that's. A fundraiser for Jamestown youth football. So that's a new event, and hopefully that does well and raises a lot of money for, for the young football players. That passed, and the final special event was the annual Whirlybird Block Party, to be held on Saturday, August 31st. Rain date is pending, they're coming up with a rain date, but that's 2:00 PM until 11:00. That passed, and the final special event was the annual Whirlibird Block Party, to be held on Saturday, August thirty-first, uh, rain date, uh, is pending, they're coming up with a rain date, but that's, uh, two P M until eleven A M, located at Winter Garden Plaza, with, uh, uh, North Main Street holes from third to fourth streets, and that passed as well. And then we had all the individuals that were here that spoke about the issues on Lakeview Avenue, um, talked briefly, but they saved it for the full council. And that was it.
Are those times right for the Whirlibird?
Did I read it wrong?
No, it's Saturday, um, you, you read it right, based on what it says.
Oh, yeah. Yes. You're correct, two P M, two, two P M to eleven P M, sorry, but yeah, it's, it's wrong.
Hey, Randy?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. President, we, uh, we only had one resolution, and it was on the five-ton crane, which we just did have a little discussion on the crane there. Yeah, what they currently are using, they, uh, use a front-end loader with forks, and that, uh, may not be available down at the new building, because that was all located on Steel Street, so, that's one reason that they would need to use that. So we passed that, but the, uh, in front of us, we have a handout, the county has released their, uh, restructuring plan, that, plan for Hazeltine and Baker. And, um, you can see it in front of you, the, the school is the, is at the Y there, and, um, Mark may want to elaborate, if anybody has any questions, they're gonna, what they're doing is they're basically tightening that corner, you can see where they're bringing the, uh, curb and sidewalk in, on the side of seven-eleven there. It was wide before, they're bringing it in, so the intersection is gonna be defined.
So, do you have a friend who uses a plan for the reconstruction of the intersection of Baker and Hazeltine? You can see the picture behind, or the, the Google image behind the picture, um, that's where the curb line currently is, um, if you think about coming into town off of Baker, turning on the Hazeltine, there's that big wide, um, radius turn there. Um, what we're doing is we are turning that street, we're narrowing that intersection and creating a T-intersection, so that way people, when they turn from Baker Street onto Hazeltine, they have to slow down to make that turn. We're also installing a crosswalk at that intersection, um, they're gonna be, uh, putting all new curbs and all new sidewalks through that intersection, so this project was, um, designed by the city, by the DPW, the engineers at DPW, and, um, put out to bid and paid for by the county. Um, so Lake Shore is the low bidder on that project, on this project, uh, and it's gonna start the day after school closes, so the intersection will be closed on June twenty-seventh. The DPW and the VPU are gonna go in and do all of our utility work for about two weeks, and then Lake Shore will come and start to dig out the intersection.
So basically, they're making a Y into a T?
Yes, yep. Um, Baker Street is also going from four lanes to three, all the way from this intersection out of town to Howard, so it's gonna be two travel lanes with a turning lane, and then bike lanes on the side. Very similar to what Washington Street is.
The detour route, do you have that yet?
Yeah, the detour route, so it's gonna be, um, it's Orr Street down to, let me just pull it up. Uh, it is, if you're coming into town, it's Orr to Garfield to Forest to Newland, that's how it's gonna be marked, obviously, there's other ways to get around, you know, you can take Zidney and Delavan and all that kind of stuff.
What about coming this way or this way?
Uh, so you would go, if you're coming from Baker, you would go Newland to Forest, Garfield, and around, that, that'll, again, that'll just be the marked detour.
And that's.
Cause there's a lot of s- special events up at Bergman Park, so.
That was, that was the best way with any truck traffic, to get the trucks around.
Yeah, for truck, for normal vehicles to go.
Normal vehicles, again, you can go.
Go Newland to City View.
Yes, there's, there's other ways around, but that will be the marked.
Projected to be known by any.
Maybe.
But City View, coming across City View, can get into the park just fine.
Yep, yep. There'll be signs that, you know, up Baker Street farther, that say road closed ahead, and local traffic only, and that kind of stuff.
So be prepared, everybody's gonna complain about it, so.
Well, that's why we wanted to, I wanted to have that in our office.
Going to the three lanes, and they're gonna be like they did on Washington Street. You know, I was just gonna say.
Is there still, I, I see the crosswalk, is there still a crosswalk up?
Yes, that's statewardist.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
And these are stop signs here, right?
That's gonna be a stop sign.
That's what it is now, right?
That is, yeah, but there's no, the way that that intersection is, you can't really put a crosswalk, cause it's so wide.
Cause it's too wide, yeah.
And the light on Baker Street that hasn't been used anyways is gonna be.
Eliminated.
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're looking to eliminate that light, and we're gonna install, the, the plan currently is to, uh, install, um, school crossing signs, but they have a push button and they, they basically flash, after somebody pushes the button.
Nice.
You, you know, my concern in the school zones is, you know, we can do our job very well and map it out, and we can put crosswalks in there, but I see students on a daily basis not utilizing the crosswalks, not, not utilizing the lights, and that's where, you know, we've had a problem up here at the school, I believe there's been two kids hit, so, we can do everything right, but, um, I guess I would like to see, uh, the school officials up there, uh, being more diligent on making sure that, that the students are using these designated areas, so don't, so we don't have something catastrophic happen and, and a child get hit and, and, and actually killed in, in this area up there, so, but we, we can only do so much.
Just don't have to follow the, the drop-off, some of the parking and crossing.
Thank you. And, yeah, thank you, Martin. And that's all, uh, that's all we really had.
Thank you. Anything else before Kim?
It's gonna be short and sweet, so, um, as all of you are aware, we're expected to have some really excruciating heat, um, we did send out a press release this afternoon, but I do wanna give you these locations, should you get calls from constituents.
That was in the release, right?
Yep, it's in the release, but I wanna make it public that Chautauqua Opportunities on Chandler Street, the Department of Mental Hygiene and Social Services on Fourth Street, James Prenter Gast Library, the Joy Fellowship on Seventh Street, and Saint Susan's Soup Kitchen will all be cooling shelters, um, there will be updates issued by, uh, Chautauqua County Executive on chqgov.com backslash heat, any updates, anything that needs to be shared, will get out to you as soon as possible, but, please encourage those who are dealing with medical conditions and the elderly, your neighbors, young children, not to be pushing the limits too hard and keep them safe.
Use another ring. It went down like fifteen degrees and then it got hot again.
I was gonna say, then it got hot again, cause it's still eighty degrees right now, so, other than that, I don't have anything for open session at the, or executive session either.
Just one thing before, go ahead, go.
Did you recall about the border party at the school between the soccer field? Who, who runs that Jase program?
What school?
Huh?
What school, first of all?
Uh, Fletcher.
Uh, that would be.
Jeff Green?
No, not anymore. I can, we can, get a hold of Dan.
Right in front of that lady's house, it's like, she's really over by the dog. Yeah, and she asked, uh, Rock fans to wrestle, they said, we would, but it's gonna buy, to be another Jase program.
Um.
That's just some of the starters.
I don't have it in front of me.
Just want it moved, right?
See, I don't, I don't know. Dan emailed me or text me, and I don't have it right in front of me, but Dan would know who it is, and how to reach them, because he's been working with them. So if you reach out to Dan, he should be able to tell you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One other quick thing, um, normally, historically, we have not had two work sessions in July, cause it's summer, uh, if you remember last year, we ended up in kind of a tough situation with only one work session, I think because of ARPA things, and there were some other things that were coming down. We had a really, really long work session in July last year, I, I just wanted to throw that out there to think about, do we want to stick with the one in July, do, do you think there's a need to have the second one like we normally would? I know, historically, we've always had just one, cause it's summer and there's less stuff going on before then, but I don't know, maybe that's something that the staff can think about in the next week, is we, we have what, next week's the voting session, right, okay.
So, the current one is scheduled for the eighth?
And then we're off the fifteenth.
We had marked in the, um, meeting calendar.
Yep.
The twenty-second is a potential day.
As a potential.
If one should be needed.
Okay.
Yep.
So maybe we should just, just put that on the radar, in case, as we get closer, there's a need, cause then last year we got stuck, cause there were some things that we needed to go through, committee and the vote on, and we didn't have time to do it, because we only have one session, so, especially, you know, Crystal's, uh, ordinance thing, so I, just to think about it, the staff, if you think we need to have the second one, if not, that's fine too, but.
We can have, we have it on the counter, we can play it by ear as we get.
You guys can just put that on the radar, in case we do need to have it, and when we're not stressed out. Stretch too far, okay, that's it? Meeting adjourned? There we go. What I said, stay cool.